Okay, welcome to the Village of Buchanan December 5th, 2023 Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as all.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agendas, approve the minutes for October 2023 Board Meeting, October 24th, 2023, and the workshop meeting of October 24, 2023, and special meeting. Do I have any comments, corrections, or?
No comments or corrections.
I have none.
All right.
None here.
Okay, thank you. So, on a motion to approve the minutes, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Comments from the floor, agenda items only? Anyone? No? Okay. Okay, so under new business, what I'm going to do, I'm gonna change the order. I'm going to, we're going to be setting a public hearing this evening on January 2nd, 2024 regarding Chapter 189.5 entitled Limited Parking, and that's about the snow ordinance. We have with us our Highway Foreman Scott Horton. So, does anyone want to make any comments? We will be having a public hearing in January, so.
Sure, yeah. As a board, we've discussed for several months now, just looking at ways to kind of modify our existing no parking during the winter, and we came up with a law that we think is suitable. I looked at, you know, a couple other of the villages and neighboring communities, and we put together a law that we'll put out for a public hearing to see whether there's any comments or feedbacks in favor or against.
Thank you.
Yes, and I, one comment.
Sure, yeah, sure.
Yeah, and Steve and Stephanie, thank you for working on this. I think this needs to be updated, and I'm looking forward to the public hearing to hear what the public has to say about this. I think that this can be adjusted in the favor of the DPW and our community members. That's all.
Okay, thank you. So, any pro or con, please come to the public hearing on January 2nd. So I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on January 2nd, 2024 regarding Chapter 189.5 entitled Limited Parking. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott, for being here this evening.
Sounds easy, Scoop.
The next is, and I know we have Chief Outhouse here from the Fire Department. I don't know if you'd like to come up, Chief. We have some new members, which is great. I'm just so happy to see we have five new members.
Yep, they're in process. Some you have that have already come in in the last few months. It actually has picked up. Thank you for, Danny, for pushing it out there on every report as I had asked. I did see it posted on some media, so that's great. I don't think we've taken in five people in the last five years, so that's great. So, thank you very much for that.
Maybe the chief, you can comment on the documentation the board hasn't received yet to see how they want to move forward.
Sure, sure. So, just to bring the board up to speed, once we receive an application, it's, the individuals are met by the membership committee. It's then forwarded to the company. At the same time, the background check is done through OFPC in Albany. I can tell you right now, if you've tried to get anything out of the state, it takes a while, and I'm not happy with that because the state should not be holding up volunteer firefighters for any community. However, that is, all of them have come back positive, that they are clear with no convictions and the arson or sex offender status. Those applications are on file. Once they leave the chief's desk, they go to the company financial secretary, which is locked. So, you will get those copies of those applications and backgrounds as soon as they come available to me, so.
All right, good. So if you're gonna approve, sorry. So if you're gonna approve the membership tonight, maybe make a contingent on receipt of that.
Subject to.
Not that you're not telling the truth, but we'd like to see that the arson and the sex offender.
Yeah, we have to make sure that we follow the agreement that the.
Sure.
The lens, when is the lens stuff done? When is the driving?
As soon as he gives me the licenses of these people, it'll be done immediately.
Sure, so we'll give you the lens information with the application. We normally haven't, in the past, only given you the lens of the people who are qualified to drive any village. So, these people coming in are not qualified to drive anything at this time. So, you know, until we forward that to you, that we're taking on a new driver, we'll forward that information to you.
Great, it's good to see some new members, it really is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Kudos to all that stepped up and, you know.
And I might add that two of these members, actually three of these members, two of them have no experience or family in first responder area. They're just general public, which is great.
First generation.
So.
That's great.
And there's four Buchanan residents, which is, is great. One from Montrose, so. So Stephanie, that's, it'll be contingent on?
The receipt of the background checks, which is the sexual and.
Arson.
Arson investigation, right. And while we're talking about this, just, it doesn't, but Bob's involved. So, I wrote to Council for the BEC to take a look at the contract, which I'll send to you afterwards, because there's a few things that we're tweaking. The 45%, remember they got the waiver from the state, that's still in there, so we're gonna tweak that. And let me take a look at the lens thing, because that might be not, that might not be worded correctly. You know, it might be it should say after they're qualified to drive on, you know.
Right.
So I'll take a look at that.
There's no sense putting them on the insurance and lens if they're not driving village-owned vehicles.
Correct.
So I'll take a look at that.
But if it's something you want to change, I'm sure you can forward that to the Board of Trustees of the Fire Department, who will put that in.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you, Bob.
So, stay there, because I have something else for you after we do this. I'd like to make a motion to approve new members, the Buchanan Engine Company One, contingent on receiving background of, the background checks on the sexual and arson investigations. And I'm going to name the five people. Clever Vella, Kelly Ferry, Joseph Ortiz, Brady Bayer, and Daniel Hahn. Thank you, thank you very much for stepping up for our community. Yeah, no, well, we're going to, we have to swear them in.
Oh, yes.
Don't we, Bob, as new members, or?
It's, this is new territory, so.
I think so, yeah. So, when everything is totally approved, I'd like to have them come in at one of our board meetings at 7:00. We'll put them up first.
Sure.
And this way, the community can see our new, our new members.
May I?
Do you have one question?
Sure, absolutely.
Should we be swearing in, or excuse me, voting in all four, five of these, or just three of them?
Just three right now, because two, two have, two are coming. Two are coming in the next 30 days.
So the last two?
It should be, yes, the last two are in process. They haven't met the company.
Thank you, Bob. Yes. So, everything that I said before, Cindy, but the new, there's three new members. So, the three are Clever Vella, Kelly Ferry, and Joseph Ortiz.
Correct.
Okay, and the others are coming.
The others are coming, and I will, I, you know, advise the board that they're, they're coming, but there were three that kind of were a little slow getting to you guys because it's new territory for us, and we'll make sure we stay on top of that. So, I did forward you those two names that will be coming in January and February, so.
Good, that's great.
And actually, there's probably another one coming as well.
That's great news.
Yep.
Good.
So some of these, some of these members are also members that are reaching the age of 16 from the Explorers. So we have taken probably at this point in time, five to six Explorers through their career since we started that have now moved up to probationary active in the Fire Department. So, the Explorer Program is there, it's functioning. There are probably four or five right now that are there, and as they become of age, they move up.
That's great, it's a great program.
It's working.
Thank you, Bob. So, the motion to approve new members of Buchanan Engine Company Number One, as I have said previously, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bob, what I wanted to, we are gonna talk about the cell, and I'm going out of order here today, the cell phone situation, our service here in the village, or lack of. Marcus has still been pursuing it, and I know Bob had, the chief had approached me about the lack of cell phone service here in the village and the problem with our first responders not having it. I've also spoken to the chief, you know, Chief Farrell about it too. They're having some issues. Bob, Marcus, and I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, so I'm glad you're here today. Marcus can kind of give you and us, all of us, an update of what's going on. We are following two tracks on this, and as you know, at the meeting, they had said it takes up to two years to put up a cell phone tower. I did speak to a resident that will be close to that area because there are, with the cell phones, there's, the cell phone towers. There are people that are pro and anti the towers, but they seemed very receptive about getting a tower there and having, actually having cell phone service in their, in their area, in their home. So Marcus, if you could just fill us on where we are with the cells, and if you have any questions, Bob, while you're here.
Sure, we met with an individual who actually builds antennas for third-party carriers, and what they do is almost like leasing space on the antenna. So they go out, they meet with the community, see if the village, board, city is interested in putting an antenna up. That's phase one. That's why they approached the mayor and the, and the fire chief. If there is interest, then they'll go out there and talk to the carriers and say, okay, do you have any bad spots in the area? Would you be interested in going to their, to the antenna? If they get any bites on that, then they'll collect the rent. A partial amount of rent also comes to the village if it's some public property. They were looking at a property behind the pool area, so that's village property. So the village will get a little bit of money, the cell tower owner will get money, and then the coverage would be cell phone coverage, but they'll also be willing to put the radio communications for police or fire on the top level for free. And so the police and the fire will have better communications as well by putting that radio communications on top of repeater. So, that's where we are right now. On a parallel course, I'm trying to reach out to Verizon, Cambridge, and T-Mobile and explain to them where the dead spots are to see if they're willing to do something themselves without the antenna to help improve cell phone coverage in certain areas. But in certain areas, you can't make any phone calls at all. So we're trying to attract that as well, so that we have two options to go. So that's where we are right now. I have not got any responses from any of the carriers because we're so small, and then I feel we have enough demand for them to, to invest in their infrastructure. But the antenna might help, because that gives a much wider range that might carry them to highways. So, that's where we are right now. As soon as we get any more information, definitely we'll be talking to the board and to the public.
We're talking about it going forward.
Yep, but I'm waiting for some information to come back to me with contact information and putting my notice in regards to emergency services, not only fire, police, NEMS, but also people at their homes. If something happened, they have to leave the house in emergency, they can't make self, I can't make a call. So, it's very, very dangerous, so that's where we are right now.
Just to add to that, there was a situation Sunday evening before we did the tree lighting. There was EMS call at the Shell gas station. I was actually over here on Ketchum. When I left to go to the call, the county radio system, the new system, I could not, it wouldn't even key up until I got to the Shell gas station. So, that has been reported to the county as a area of concern for us. That has been broadcast throughout the county that any Fire Department, emergency service, ambulance that has issues with the county system, to tell them the location. We have a few locations here. So, my radio didn't start responding until I got to the Shell gas station. Okay, this is all in the upgraded system of the county. Now, we'll be working our way through these issues probably within the next 12 to 48 months. They're changing over slowly. 2025, there's another changeover. Currently, we're gonna be losing our old frequencies probably sometime next year. That is what they call low band. I am currently looking to upgrade to UHF, to frequencies that will be new for us that I can use locally. And the reason why is if there is a failure of the county, right now, the county dispatches our Fire Department. If there's a failure, we're not getting dispatched. So I need to continue to have a local ability to do that. That's one of the reasons why locations were looked at here, the Village Hall, the Highway Department, the firehouse for an antenna, a repeater antenna, because these ultra-high frequencies do need a little help to push out the frequency. So, there's a lot of things in the mix. We'll know a little bit more next year. But cell service, again, tonight in this building coming up here. Trying to send a message, and I can't send a message. So, there's a problem.
Yeah.
There's a problem, and I hope we can address it the best way we can.
Yeah, and waiting two years, and we also discussed that, you know, to, from our first responders to send that message out to these companies, to these providers. But not only that, if we have to get into a situation where we have to do, go out and get signatures from the residents to really reinforce what's going on here. You know, our service here was always so-so, but I've noticed that it's just completely deteriorated at this point, as you know. You know, and I thank you for bringing that to the board and letting us know, you know, that we have some issues with the first responders.
I appreciate you, the board, taking a look at the possibility of trying to rectify this situation.
Bob, is that county system, is that similar to the cell phone system? Is it on the same network? It's completely different network.
Radio communication is a cell.
That's what I thought.
Totally separate.
So it's two different things that we're talking about?
Yeah, two different things.
Right.
So when I got, and to be honest with you, thank God I had the low band, which is going by the wayside. Federal government is getting rid of low band, there's no parts or pieces anymore. They're not making these radios. We're gonna keep our radios going as long as we can. I had to actually call my Assistant Chief on the low band radio to tell the county on his radio that I was going and I'll be there in two minutes. So, thank God for a little radio backup there. But I have to make sure moving forward, when low band goes away, which it'll go away in the next few years, that we have the ability to self-dispatch and to have two private frequencies, kind of what we have now on 4626. So, the county has gotten bigger over the last 30 years. There's a need for the radio system. But I think the smaller villages out there kind of, and municipalities have kind of got pushed by the wayside. And so we have, we do have to fend for ourselves and make sure that we're responsible enough to maintain emergency service and calls and dispatching for the residents. So, we'll be looking into that.
Thank you.
Something we have to work on. We will. Marcus will stay in touch with the companies, but they're not exactly receptive, so we'll probably have to go to a tower and then we'll work through that.
Okay.
Anything else you have for us while you're up at the podium?
Sure, if I, if I may, first of all, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday Season on behalf of the officers and members of Buchanan Engine Company. On December 17th, 2023, between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. is the annual Children's Christmas Party held at the Fire Department. Come see Santa, and children 10 and under will receive a gift. So, the board has always been invited to stop by, say hello, and maybe have some juice and cookies and see Santa.
What's the timing at again, Bob?
It's 2:00 to 4:00. And you will probably see fire apparatus from between 12:00 and 2:00 p.m. on the streets of the village announcing Santa's coming to the firehouse.
I was also gonna suggest then that we use the code RED system to.
That'd be great if you could do that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
That would be nice, because it's, it's a nice event. It's nice, the kids get gifts, it's really.
I remember as a kid, always looking forward to it, so.
Nothing for the big kids, huh?
Nothing for the big kids.
Just juice and cookies, okay.
We're left out.
Okay. I'm talking about our age group.
Yeah, I know.
The big, big kids. Thanks, Bob, that's always nice that you do that.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And thank you also the Fire Department for us once again working with our community with the tree lighting. So we, the board just wants to.
Always a pleasure.
Let you know, thank you. You're always, you know, the Fire Department's always here for our community, so we appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll pass it along. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, the next is authorizing the mayor sign IMA with the County of Westchester regarding mobile radios. So, whereas pursuant to local law number 13-2020 adopted by the County Board of Legislators on September 14, 2020, the parties entered into an intermunicipal agreement for police mutual aid pursuant to the Mutual Aid and Rapid Response Plan. Whereas the county operates public safety radio communications for the County Department of Public Safety, Department of Emergency Services, and the Department of Public Works and Transportation, B-line transit operations, as well as for the communication between the county and emergency first responders throughout Westchester County and the surrounding jurisdictions. In other words, the county radio systems. Whereas the municipality is in need of mobile radios for its municipal police vehicles program with radio communication, systems that will allow it to communicate with the county law enforcement, fire, EMS, and other first responders for mutual aid purposes. And whereas the county wishes to furnish the mobile radios to the municipality for installation in its municipal police vehicles, and the municipality wishes to accept the mobile radios according to the terms set forth herein. So, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the IMA with the county. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the next is, Trustee Stewart brought this up last time. I know I'm, I skipped around.
You're not gonna read all of this?
No, do you want me to? Because I will.
No.
Why don't you read it?
No.
No? Okay, just checking.
I didn't realize it was this long.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the agreement, yeah. I tried to get it in one little package there. So, at the last meeting, Dan Stewart, we were talking about, we all know that the leaf vacuum broke down, and it kind of messed up our schedule a little bit. It's back on the road, and Trustee Stewart had mentioned that we extend the seasonal workers to make sure that we can catch up and get this done. So the next motion is to, I'm making a motion to authorize the extension of time for highway seasonal workers through January 5th of 2024. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next is something we do every year. It's a motion to call for a public hearing on January 2nd regarding overriding the New York State property tax, and that's something we do as a precautionary, and we have to do it. So Marcus, do you want to add anything to that?
No, like, I think I express this every year. We do this in the hopes that we don't go over the tax cap, but if we do, we're protected in case we do. We'll know more in January, February, but we have to adopt it at this early timeline. Just in case we do, we do go over, then we're not, we're not in violation of the state law. So it just protects us, depending what situation we fall under.
Okay, good. So, we're gonna be calling for the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next is a motion to approve the carryover of 10 vacation days for the village administrator. So can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. On a question?
My pleasure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The next is to amend the master fee schedule for sewer and stormwater connection fee. And thank you, Marcus, you had looked at other municipalities of what they're doing, Larchmont, New Rochelle, Peekskill, and it looks like New Rochelle has, is a little more.
More detailed.
Lot more detailed than the other ones. The other ones are just flat rates, so I don't know if you would like to.
Sure, I would like to talk about this. At the last workshop, I brought it up, the possibility, because I realized, when we all meet as managers, we discuss things that we all do, and I realized that some people had a sewer connection fee and a stormwater connection fee, we had neither. So, I looked around, and New Rochelle seems to be the most reasonable one, reasonable, because it actually breaks apart by how many dwelling units and the type of development it is. And also, what I don't, didn't include in there, I would like to include it outside the village of a 30% increase over the 124, for example. So I'm gonna read it for the public. Residential, any improved property classified as residential on the access records including 1, 2, 3, family, homes, apartments, condominiums, or co-ops, the rate is $124.11 per year and per dwelling unit. So run that $124.11 for each dwelling unit. What I would like to do is outside the village, and I'm thinking, because we're allowing people from the outside to connect now as well, to increase that to 161.37. That's a 30% difference, and we discussed that 30% difference with the town originally regarding the fees that are gonna be. So I thought it was only fair, if we want to charge our residents a fee, it should be the same contingent, 30% increase.
How are we getting per year?
Oh, no, this shouldn't be per year, it should be, we should be doing one-time.
One-time, okay.
It'll be a one-time. It'll be a one-time. So that will be residential, not, I know, I'm gonna change, we have to change.
Yeah, that's what I was confused.
That's the correction. We have to correct that.
We're gonna charge them every year for it.
Yeah, we have to change that. Because New Rochelle does do per year, I'm just doing a one-time fee. And then the other one's hotel, any property containing a hotel, motel, a rate is still $124, $124 per hotel room. And then when it comes non-residential, it depends on how many acres you're talking about, and the fee schedule modifies up as more land you have. Again, I'm just thinking another source of revenue, knowing the financial condition we're under, and knowing if new development comes in, either outside or inside the village, it just brings us a little, a little bit extra money for, for our resources. So, something to consider, you can do it by resolution, we can discuss it more, and then we can add it to the fee schedule, and then have it ready to go for any developments that happen from this point forward.
I don't think we need to drag it on, that's my opinion. I mean, we should just adopt some kind of schedule.
I think we need to talk about it a little bit, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
And see how we're gonna work it out.
Yeah.
Just adopt it right away, but.
But you're leaning towards the City of New Rochelle's.
Correct. And then, and then on the stormwater side, the City of Peaceville charges a $600 connection fee. So I say, we'll mirror that, $600, same thing, and maybe a 30% increase for not, for outside the village, that'd be $780. I don't think anybody from the outside connects to a stormwater, but just in case they do, it's a one-time hit of $600 or $780.
Marcus, do any of them gauge it off water usage, just, not for stormwater, obviously, but sewer gauge off the water usage? Could you, you know, on a monthly scale?
Minister, yeah, regarding connection fees, no. Regarding the sewer fee, yes.
Yeah, sewer fee.
Yeah, sewer fee, but not on the connection fee. Not on the connection.
These are just one-time connections.
Is this one-time connection is for pre-existing and new construction?
No, it will be for any, from this point forward.
Oh, so new, so nothing, no, okay.
Yeah, so the residents who live in there don't get anything, no. This will be new connections.
So anything new coming and tying into our line?
Correct.
Which is good, because it'll, it'll, it'll cover our expenses.
Correct, because we still have to do the inspections and everything else, so that's what I was thinking, yes.
That's a good idea.
So I'm glad you brought that up, so the residents at home, no, this doesn't affect you. It's affecting new, new homes, new, whatever it is, everything new coming in. Yes, exactly.
Okay, so this is, the board wants to discuss this further, so do we want to put this on for discussion at the workshop?
Whatever the board wants to do.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so workshop. Okay, so we'll remove that from the agenda. The next is, and Cindy's here. There's a license agreement with the County of Westchester to provide a license for remote access to the county clerk's land records and legal files. And I remember years ago, when a house was sold, it could take up to three months before the village knew who the new owner was. So Cindy, I know this is your neck of the woods, this is your cup of tea, if you'd just like to do a little.
So this is how we know when a house is sold, through the deeds, and every week, I go on the line, online, to records online and look up what's done and then update our records. So it's really important that we have it.[1738.05]
And just so that we know, we're gonna add Peter on there, too, so that way Peter can update his records in case the property changed. If there's any issue with building department, he'll get the new property owner as well.
Someone has to physically go on to the website. We're not notified.
Yeah.
But we're not notified automatically?
Not notified automatically, but there's a spot in there that just says municipalities, and I click on there, click Buchanan, and it pops up whatever has been done in Buchanan.
Great.
Wow, getting right into the twenty-first century here. Wow, this is great.
It is.
No, good, good. Makes your job a little easier. So, I'd like to make a motion authorizing mayor sign the license agreement with the county of Westchester to provide a license for remote access to the county clerk's land records and legal files. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, this evening, we have the building inspector with us as we do every, every meeting, and there's going to be a discussion on property maintenance.
How's the board, what's going on with the properties on Albany Post Road?
Yes, Mr., the owner, the owner was a thirty-one fifty-one, Mr. Preston. The contractor was the one holding up the project over there. It was not Mr. Preston himself. The contractor is not a computer savvy person. He only faxes and wasn't receiving a fact. He got the invoice, the check was certified and sent overnight to the contractor, and he's already started over there. He's already started cleaning, and Mr. Selick has pretty much cleared all the upper area and lower, he's cleaned up his whole area with the same contractor. You know, so he took care of that right away, and this, he was dragging his feet, so he started over there yesterday, officially yesterday. And so, that's, that's moving forward, so we have no issues with them at this point.
Okay.
Good news.
And to let the public know, too, that the property right across from the property that you mentioned has submitted an application to the planning board.
That's thirty-one seventy-six Albany Post Road, the old gas station in the corner that's been, has a top over it. They put an application in. I'm glad Steve brought that up. So, in front of the planning board, they'll be in the next planning board meeting, so at least maybe something will happen with that building shortly as well.
Great.
What are their plans? Do you happen to know?
The previous approval is very similar to what they're going, reapplying for now. They were almost approved a year and a half ago before the property issues took place. It's pretty much looks at this point, it was, it was going to be a deli originally and rentals, and now I believe it's going to be a liquor store and rentals on the proposal of the plans they submitted. Similar design, upstairs apartments, commercial to the front, you know, retail sale in the front.
Footprint stays the same?
Pretty much, hasn't really changed, no.
The biggest issue that was, happened the last time was he started working on, on the hill, trying to get on slope. So, now everything's gonna concentrate on the area that's been, been developed in the past. And according to plan, that area remains green, so we won't have those issues that we had the last time, as long as he doesn't touch that property the way he did the last time.
How many apartments are that, Peter?
Two.
Upstairs?
I also would like to make note of the fact that Mr., the owner of the property, Mr. Sarmiento, was given a permit by the village to repair the roof that was on the building, knowing that it was going to be renovated, not to completely replace it, because it's changing, and take care of the, the outside of the property and remove the canopy on the front. That was a life safety issue. The permit was issued five months ago. The canopy was removed, and he did nothing with the roof, and that was part of the original permit approval, but he did not submit his paperwork until now because he didn't want to manipulate the building, because he knew he was doing the roof, but he left us with tarps and things that I wrote multiple violations for to remove and change, and he put white tarts up recently. And the application just finally came back in, so that's why he's not doing anything about that at this time. Violations were issued. I don't know what else to do with that, because he's going to be manipulating the building once he gets the site plan approval, which he pretty much almost had the last time. He was very close. So, that's why there is, I don't know what else to do to try to alleviate the white tarps that he put on the building several weeks ago to mitigate the water leakage into the building, which was supposed to be resolved with roof repairs. So, I, if there's any other direction from the board on that, I don't know.
But the violations were issued.
Yes.
And he's moving forward in front of the planning board.
Yes, it's been a year. Yes, finally.
Um, I do have something to ask you. As I was out and about over the weekend, somebody approached me, was very upset. And I want you to put that out there. They were upset because they felt, they said that, you know, this is ridiculous. I have to get a permit to replace a toilet bowl. This isn't right. And I said, I don't think you need a permit to replace a toilet bowl, so, you know, I want to ask you on TV, so that the residents know. Yeah, she was very upset. So, if you could explain that to the public and, because I know there were issues a while back with that, but if you could just.
When you first hired me, I tried to rein in all the illegal electrical and plumbing work that was taking place. As you are, in what New York State and Westchester County, you have to be a licensed professional, electrician or plumber in order to touch drain, waste, and vent or electrical. A toilet bowl is connected to your drain. You're not allowed to replace a bowl as a homeowner in New York State size or Westchester County. We had this issue prior. There was a petition signed to fire me because nobody was happy with my answer. I spoke with multiple building inspectors and continuing, municipalities surrounding us, and for, we put it, we deemed it as a maintenance item. So, you want to put a faucet in your kitchen? It's a maintenance item. You're not supposed to, but you can. You want to replace the bowl? You can. So, again, based on other inspectors, you know, ways of handling the situation, I agree, but I want to make this very clear to everyone. You're not a licensed plumber. There are a lot of specific requirements for the installation of a toilet bowl between the flooring, the bottom of the bowl, the wax gasket, the spacing. And if you put a tile floor under, raise the bowl, you don't have the correct gasket between. You touch a plunger on it, it breaks. You flood your basement or downstairs. So, everybody thinks it's so easy, and they watch it on television. There's a lot of rules. The ring holds that bowl to the floor. If the bolts are not correctly anchored to the floor, and you have a person of a larger size that rocks back and forth, you will tip the bowl right off the floor. There's a lot of reasons why the bowl has to be installed by professionals. So, we're going to keep that as a maintenance item, but I will explain to you right now, as a contractor myself, and I've done a lot of insurance work, if you have an issue and you, the house gets flooded for some work that you did as a homeowner, not being a licensed professional, they will not cover your claim. All right, I'm just explaining. You're not supposed to do those items, but as maintenance, and if people are upset, we can allow that to happen that way. Other inspectors and I will just keep that as a maintenance item and leave it alone. But please understand the responsibility of the owner. If that bowl fails, or that gasket breaks, or that bowl tips over, your insurance company, when they come in, they're gonna say, the toilet bowl was put in seven weeks ago. Mr. Cook, did they get a permit for that? I know nothing about that. So, at that point, the insurance company will most likely not cover the claim for you, because it wasn't installed by a licensed professional. So, that's where we are. I'm not asking everyone to pay a plumber to do the bowl for them, but at least call me. I will explain to you what at least the parameters are and what it's supposed to be, so at least you can do it correctly. Most people do not, you know.
So, how are you finding out about these toilets, these illegal toilets?
I don't do any. The people are upset with, they mentioned it to her, is what I'm understanding.
So, how are they upset if you don't know about them?
They, they were upset because they thought that they had to get a permit for a toilet bowl or whatever, so that's not the case, because Peter's considering it like a maintenance item.
I did this two and a half years ago. It's a maintenance item.
But for their own, for what they should do, because Peter just, you know, you just explain that, you know. You know, if, if something goes wrong, and you know, you know these insurance companies today, they don't want to pay out anything. So, it's, it's, it's a maintenance thing. It's up to the resident. You don't have to have a permit. So, I, I just want that to be settled and put to, put to rest. Dan, you're, you're in the insurance business. You know how crazy the insurance companies are now.
They won't necessarily deny a claim, but don't tell them you installed it yourself, okay? I'm just, I'm just telling you.
There you go.
So, Peter, that's a state code or law?
It's plumbing. It's plumbing, New York State and Westchester County. Licensed professional, only drain, waste, and vent.
And we have to abide by that.
That's, again.
Even a repair, replacement?
Replacement is still, you're touching it. A faucet is another.
This is going down the rabbit hole.
Basically, we, I deemed it as a, as a maintenance item, two, two years ago, two and a half years ago.
All right.
I'm fine with it. Just know that, and if anybody has a question, call me, and I will explain what the parameters are.
That's a good point. Any questions, call our building inspector. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Peter. Thank you for that update. Okay, the next is bond resolution. Stated for today, authorizing the issuance of up to nine hundred thousand aggregate principal amount serial bonds for the village of Buchanan. And this is in reference to bonding a truck, a fire pumper, for the, for the village, for the fire department. I just, you know, I, I just want to say one thing. I, I realize we need the things that we're gonna be bonding, but we heard some disappointing news this evening. Before the meeting, we met with Holtech, somebody, a representative from Holtech. And they have informed us that because of the eight-year pause, they will not be releasing the sixty acres for some time. So, yeah, it was disappointing. We were, we were on a path. We were headed to reinventing the village, and this legislation has, that was passed, Save the Hudson, has put that on hold. The company's not interested in, in releasing any properties at this point. So, I know we need these items, but I just, going forward, I'm not a big fan of bonding, but in the same token, I know we need these items that we're going to be bonding this evening. But we, going down the road here, we are kind of facing an uncertain future with, you know, Marcus has, has told us with the cessation fund, that's going soon. So, the original agreement with them, working with Holtech, is that we would work forward to try to get the sixty acres released, which would replace our tax base. That's on pause now, too. So, we have two bond resolutions this evening, and I, we, after this, I think the only bonding we need, we have to do is gonna have to be for emergency items. And also, we're gonna have to really relook at the budget to see, you know, what things we need and how we can, you know, budget for it going forward. So, we were talking about, I was talking to Marcus today about the budget. We have a few bonds that we've had, and one of the bonds is, was for an emergency for the pumping station on Fourth Street that we did several years ago. The payback on that is a hundred and thirty thousand per year. And that includes the pump station and also the fire truck that we bought a couple of years ago. Tonight, when we do the other, the second bond, it's for six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's a twenty-year bond. That will be for a backhoe, a Mack truck, and a Chevy dump truck. So, that will also be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars each year that the village will have to pay back. So, with the bonding, we'll be looking at paying back two hundred and sixty thousand a year. So, I know we need these items, you know.
The other one thirty is already in the budget.
Right, the one thirty is in the budget, but this will be an additional one thirty. But either way, you're paying two hundred and sixty thousand dollars towards debt each year. That's, that's all I'm trying to say. So, I'm gonna read the, the resolutions.
Teresa, you just have to read what's in the, in the agenda. That's all.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do, Cindy. Yeah, no. I, I know, you know what, but you know what?
I know you like to talk.
I know.
You want me to read it?
I know that he likes me to read everything in detail. It doesn't matter how many pages. He likes, you write, right? Yeah, he's, he likes that.
Well, not tonight, because you'll be coughing a lot.
Oh, sorry.
It may take forever.
I know, in between the cough drops and the water. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep it simple. Okay, so, bond resolution dated December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the issuance of up to nine hundred thousand aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the village of Buchanan, county of Westchester, state of New York, pursuant to local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition of a fire pumper for the village of Buchanan. Can I have a second?
Second.
On a question.
Just to explain why we do two separate resolutions for the public and for the board. Items that we're discussing have different PPU's. They call it period of probable usefulness. So, for example, the fire truck, according to the state, has a twenty-year life. If the truck lasts ten years, thirty years, then ten years, you're not paying for anything. It's like taking a loan and paying off the loan and have the, have the equipment. The other vehicles we listed have a fifteen-year life, and we know these trucks have lasted twenty, twenty-five years. So, these are long-term investments that will more than pay for themselves over time and pieces of equipment that we need to operate the village. And I, I know between the deputy director and the fire department, they do a really good job maintaining the pieces of equipment. So, and I, I wish we would have done this earlier in time, because the interest rates are higher. So, a hundred and thirty thousand for nineteen years, twenty years. But then, the good thing about it, nineteen, twenty, twenty years from now, when those trucks need replacement, they have money set aside, so they have to reinvest and buy new trucks. They'll have money set aside for the future as well. So, this is not only planned for now, but they're planning for the long-term future.
And can you also explain the process? So, we're doing the bond resolution tonight. We're not taking out a loan tonight.
Correct.
We're not paying back anything starting next month.
Correct.
This is a long process, and this allows our, who our chief is here, to now be able to go out and look for the correct vehicle that's needed. So, this, this puts the village in, in a good position to move forward.
What I like to, what the board has done here is to actually think ahead of time, being proactive versus emergency, and trying to do something at the last minute.
Correct.
Even through a bond risk, or through the bond processes, take three or four months to even do a bond. But as we discussed, the worst, I'm glad you brought it up tonight, is we're talking about not borrowing any money until Jan, June or July of next year, which is going to be next fiscal year. The principal and interest will not be due for a year after that. So, it'll be two years before we pay anything. So, the idea would be is, overall, this would be a three percent increase. So, my plan is do one and a half percent increase for this coming year, one and a half, and then another one and a half next year, so that way we can spread it out over a two-year term.
Level it out.
Correct.
So, in layman's terms, it's a big credit. It's like a.
It's like a line of credit.
A line of credit.
Correct.
It's like a home equity line of credit. We're staging ourselves to be able to pull the trigger when we have to.
That's correct, that's correct.
And that's, that's what, that's what Steve's talking about, is that over a long period of time, like, it gives the ability for Bob to shop now. You know, not that he's gonna go out and spend all our money, but it gives him the ability to, to, to fast-track a truck, like he's been saying, or, you know, and, and kind of what Steve was getting at.
And it's a life safety, you know, as Bob explained to us, the current state of that pumper. I mean, if that pump fails, then, you know, we're in a lot of trouble. It's, it's, it's a life safety issue, so I think it's important for the village to get ahead of it. And I appreciate the chief for bringing that to our attention and, and making sure that we get this, this resolved.
And one more thing, I will thank the fire department for, but they actually are replacing two pieces of equipment with this. They're replacing the rescue truck and the pumper with one. The rescue truck, we talked about in two or three years, but another three hundred thousand dollars. So, we're saving that money in the long term, too, because the fire department is working with the village, understanding our financial condition. Now, we have two pumpers that actually fight fires, so I really thank the fire department to work with us on that as well. Well, I'll work with all the taxpayers.
Bob, where are you with the repair of the, of the, the other end?
So, the repair was done.
Okay, good.
Truck is back in Buchanan. It's so far operating fine. The bill will be forthcoming. But it's done. We are, we've had our second meeting today with our Pierce representative, who measured the doors. Gotta make sure the fire truck fits. Today, fire trucks are coming bigger than they ever have. So, he spent probably a good thirty-five to forty minutes taking all kinds of measurements to go back to their engineers. There is a fast-track truck that he showed us that possibly be out in January. Again, I want to thank the village board for heeding the warning, because these trucks are a high demand. And when they hit the, the Pierce dealers online, they could be gone in twenty minutes. And, you know, we want to be ready to go. So, the next thing would be to get the legal documents to the board to be reviewed, so when that time comes, we can pull that trigger. We will be looking at possibly of January second of another apparatus that may fit, but it's all according to measurement. So, we're staying on top of it. You, you did a great job allowing us to be ready to pull that trigger. You have the money. If we had a look, it'd be gone, if we had, you know, if you had to go through the process. So, thank you very much for that. It's a, it's a great job done there. So, we'll keep you informed as we move along the process. Be asking Marcus, you know, when payment is not due on a fire truck, until you receive it. So, you know, we're looking quite some time into the end of twenty-four if we can get a fast-track truck.
And Bob, could you just reiterate what you're talking about when you say a fast-track truck, so that people understand the difference, so?
Sure. So, the Pierce dealership manufactures trucks offline, like a demo type of car, like a no-frills type of apparatus. We have to look at that very closely, because we are combining two fire apparatuses into one, so we want to make sure we have the room to put the additional equipment. But, so that comes in, it'll be built quicker. It could take nine months from the time that it hits the manufacturer, and they, they put it out to basically whoever wants it, here it is, here's the price. So, if we wanted to build one, the word is today, thirty months to forty months wait.
And there's a price differential involved, correct?
There is a price differential.
If you could just shed some light on that.
Sure, so.
To understand it.
Today, I haven't even had the opportunity to share this with some of the other members of the firehouse, but today, with looking at some of the things that we think we would have wanted in this truck. have wanted in this truck, just punching the numbers, it looked like a million dollars. And that is customizing this fire truck. Right now, you're in the ballpark of about $860,000 to $900,000 on a fast-track. We don't know until we see that design come out. It's all hush, hush until they send it out. So, the dealer doesn't even really know what he's getting to put out. So, as soon as that comes out, he lets us know. And again, we've got to be ready if we want to save the money and get that type of truck.
Right, so this is a cost-effective way of getting the pumper.
I think, I think it is. I think it's, it's your best buck, a quick, no-frills fire truck. And gets your job done. As, as you have a 2021 over there right now, is the same type of purchase.
And Bob, just, just explain what would happen with the old trucks that we'll, we'll be replacing.
Sure. So, the other savings to that is that, you know, whether the board wants to go ahead and auction those trucks off, you'll have two trucks to work with, and we'll see what the value is at the time. So, you do, you do, there is some equity in those trucks that you'll be receiving, and so maybe that'll lessen the amount of money you'll have to borrow.
Yeah, just, just to reiterate, we're, we're trying to do it the most cost-effective way to furnish them with the apparatus that they need, and we're just trying to keep everybody abreast of, you know, the situation, so.
And I just want to add one more point. We just talked about the timeline, about the trucks. That truck that we're placing, they're 32, 32 years old?
Correct.
Correct? We're bonding for 20 years. So, and if it wasn't for the issue with the tank right now, that truck could still be operational, correct?
Uh, that, yeah, that truck would be, you know, it's just the, the age of the truck.
Yeah, so that goes...
Well, it is operational.
It is, it is operational now. Again, you know, my last comment was when we replaced, you made the decision to replace the impeller in the truck. You know, now we have a good working pump, so some equity in that when the time comes to decide what you want to do with it. So, you know, there's some equity coming back. I can't tell you how much, because it changes every month.
Right.
I mean, I get a price for you today, it'll be different six months from now, so.
But it shows you the longevity and how much we can trust after the debt is paid off.
Right, yep.
But all of our equipment, you know, everything that the village, you know, we've been fortunate over the years.
First, and, and finally, just, I know Danny knows and trustee Wheeler knows, but for the board members who haven't been involved in emergency services, you know, this, this equipment you're buying, number one, is for the life safety of the firefighters first and the village residents second. My guys cannot go into burning buildings with low water pressure, because the pump is not working, it's a 32-year-old pump. That's not gonna happen. This is very proactive, and, and I really do appreciate the decisions you're making, because they are difficult decisions. And, but, you know, as the fire chief, it's the right decision. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I'll be abstaining.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Okay.
The next is a, another bond resolution. So, these are for a backhoe, a Mack truck plow, and a Chevy dump truck. So, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the issuance of up to 620,000 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Buchanan, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance laws, law, to finance the cost of the acquisition of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance for the village. So, can I have a second?
Second.
On a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next is a, just a motion authorizing the mayor to sign a letter to the Montrose Improvement District regarding the water purchase rates. Marcus, would you like to comment on that? I do have the letter here.
Oh, sure. There's been some discussion with the Montro, the, just the, people don't know where they get their water from, just in case you don't. We get water from the Montrose Improvement District, and we also get water from the city of Petzkill. We pay both of them a certain fee. That's actually passed down to the people who are using the water. We've had an agreement since the 80s with Montrose, and, and in the agreement, as you specify, is how much water you have to buy at a certain amount. So, we've been going back and forth to try to balance out between Petzkill and Montrose, and try to do what's best for the community, not only the quality of water, but also the rate that we're paying. So, we're talking about to Montrose to change that agreement and not to lock us into what we have, and have the village with the flexibility to purchase the amount of, the amount of water from each community as they fit. Petzkill, we can buy as much or as little as we want. Montrose had a more higher limit that we want to be able to modify.
Are we doing the contract though?
Yes, the letter, that's what I hope, and that might open it up. They want a letter from the mayor first, before we open up the contract.
Okay. I signed it. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did we have a second?
Yeah, 'cause we, yeah, we did, because then I, I did it on a question. I don't know who did it. Yeah, somebody did a second.
I seconded it.
Okay. There you go. So, on a question. Nobody's listening to you, because they don't know. Okay. Justice, Justice Reports for October 2023. This one is, oh no, it's November. It's the November reports. So, $1,093 received. Police report.
Okay, Mayor, for the month of October, there was 202 calls, 44 moving summonses. Of those calls, 12 were to assist citizens, 13 were for alarms, 11 for medical aid, and 30 for other complaints and violations of the 44 moving summonses. Three were for stop sign violations, and 12 for speed in zone.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Highway report.
Highway report. That would be me. 82.69 tons of household garbage, 15 tons of bulk dumpsters, 6.5 tons of leaves, 0.76 tons of metal, chip, 29 yards of chips. They did a lot, okay? So, they cut down trees, they finished catch basins, put new grates on, cleaned, filled, graded some ditches. They did a lot of vehicle maintenance, getting ready for the winter, cleaned catch basins with leaves in them. What else did these guys do? They were very busy this past month. They did a project on Broadway, and the, we had a lot of washout issues on Broadway, so they put in riprap to stabilize the road there. And I, I asked them a letter here from a Bob Vargo on Henry Street. He had a drainage issue. He contacted us, and Scott Horton, our foreman, and Tony Santiago and Mike Giuliano rectified the situation, and he would like to thank them, and they did it in a attentive and constructive, constructive fashion. So, in a, at a timely manner. So, I want to thank them as well for a good job. That's all.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
Can I suggest that we add this letter to each employee's work file?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well done, Dan. Thanks for picking up my slack, Dan.
And, and thank you, Mr. Vargo, too. We, we really love to get letters like this, you know, spotlighting how, how good our highway employees are. So, thank you for sending the letter. Okay. The next is the wastewater report. Treated water, 13,175,000 gallons. Ludge removal, 110,500 gallons. Lab reports, Westchester County Department of Health, so there were six, six reports submitted to the County Department of Health, and six to the DEC, and everything is okay over there. Okay. Building department.
Okay. I have two months here, September and October, so I'll just do a total of the two of them together, with some highlights here. In the two months, Peters issued 27 building permits. He's issued 21 certificate of vacancies, so he's busy on that end. And he had six property maintenance issues that were resolved without having to issue violations, which is good, so that shows that he is working with the residents through these issues. And, you know, he's, he's a busy guy out there. Thank you for what you do, Pete.
Thank you. Buchanan Engine Company report.
That would be me.
That's you.
So, for the month of October, we had zero structure fires, six EMS assists, seven automatic alarms, mutual aid of three, mutual aid received, zero, and motor vehicle accidents of two for a total of alarms of 19. And just to reiterate, I know we spoke about the new members, but Bobby always is pushing for new members, so they're always in need of volunteers, and there's, you know, some incentives in the way of property taxes and a service program, sort of like a little bit of a pension. So, anybody that's interested in joining, we suggest you contact Chief Bob Oathouse. That's it.
So, Dan's, Dan's reports are helping the Fire Department. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next is, so, the planning board minutes for September 28th and October 26th, received and filed. We have those, and I just want to make a correction. The justice reports were October, not November. So, prosecutor's report, we don't have anything this evening. Attorney's report, do we have anything?
I don't.
Okay.
Either for public or executive.
Okay.
Happy?
Wow, that's good.
Administrators report.
So, a couple of things for the village board. First of all, on the planning board, for the public information, we have three applications coming to the planning board on, on the, on November...
November 20, or December 20.
December 20th. Thank you, thank you, Steve. We have the 3176 already post road that we just talked about, which is a long time in coming. I think it's gonna improve that area tremendously. It's right at the corner. We got the AMS project, and we have Village Square, which most people know it's called Bone Project. So, if you're interested in those projects, please attend the meetings. We'd like to welcome and get as many comments as possible. It helps the process move forward a little bit, a little bit better for everybody. So, that's number one. At the last workshop, we also talked about, I applied for grants for the boiler and for the sewer repair next to Fat Sal's. I, I followed up with a couple of emails and phone calls. They're still reviewing it. I've got no guarantee of either approval or denial at this point. We're still waiting for that. The paving for this year, I'm just repeating it again for people who missed the last meeting, the paving for this year is completed. They couldn't finish everything they wanted to do. So, what's left to be done is, I'm gonna repeat them again, so a lot of people know, there's two, two homes on Lake Drive, they had to do the driveway curbing, the driveway curb in one, one home on Woods Court, drop curb handicap on Broadway, that should be totally completed at this point. Henry Street, the road, the catch basins have to be completed, Porta Gallagher, Craft Lane, and White Street across from the park. So, that's gonna be phase one when we start paving next year. So, that's number one. It'll be the same contractor at the same price that they provided for this year. So, that's one, let you know about that. We, I, so, we followed up with, with Scott. We had the discussion about the building, this new school building they built for their maintenance garage, or whatever you want to call it. Met with the, what do you call him, facilities manager for the school. That building's 4,000 square feet. They spent $1.66 million on that building for three employees, just to let you know.
That's crazy.
The original cost estimate, 1.5 million. He said, but the cost overruns was 1.66 million for that building. So, I wanted to update you on that. So, we did follow up on that. So, we're still looking, like, doing something for the village, for the DPW garage, but that, that number really scares me. So, we'll keep on discussing this.
They didn't, they didn't get a lot over there for 1.66.
1.66. Yep, so at least you know what the number is. So, that's what, I was surprised by that number myself, but I'm not a construction guy, so.
We're gonna have to reorganize the inside of that garage. Yeah. And utilize the space.
I think we could utilize what we have.
Never mind building anything else.
We can go to Home Depot, buy the shed.
That's, yeah, no, that's crazy.
Yeah, so that's the price for that. And then also, there's some more research in the pickleball courts. So, some background information, city of Petzkill, they put four pickleball courts at the Pew Park. If anybody's interested, it's not open, but it's done, but it'll be open in the springtime. DeRosa did that project, it was $223,000. Town of Cortland, Sports Tech did that one. I think they built six courts. That was $221,000, just to let you know. I talked with the village, village of Cortland, they have no pickleball courts. They say, our residents use the town. So, they're not considering doing any pickleball courts. They say, if you want to use pickleball, you go to the town and use the pickleball courts. The other thing I did, I did meet with DeRosa at our tennis courts to see what the number might be, and again, it's like, it's like, nothing's, nothing's really cheap these days. So, first of all, he said he measured the court, and the court is substandard. The two courts are not the regulation size for, for tennis. We're off by eight feet. So, he measured it. So, he said, if you want to do a pickleball court, you can't do a tennis, a regulation tennis court unless you want to do a smaller tennis court. So, so, he's looking at, looking at, if you did a tennis court and leave the other areas open space, per se, and do something else with it. But his price, because there's two tennis courts, remember? Both places, just they want, let's go back. City of Petzkill, they one tennis court, would have two tennis courts, to rehab those two tennis courts, to whatever you should want to do, between $350,000 to $400,000. That's the number.
We don't want tennis courts.
Hmm?
I thought we already came to the conclusion that we don't want tennis courts.
No, if you want a pickleball court, if you want a pickleball court, pickleball court, and then redo the other one as a tennis court, or just leaving it as open space, per se, blacktop it, and pay, and put a basketball court there, that's another use. That's his number, $350,000 to $400,000 for a pickle, for four pickleball courts and a basketball court.
We'll go to the town, too, then.
Yes.
No kidding. Wow.
I mean, our paving, the budget for our paving in one year is...
$300,000.
That's what we put in?
That's what we put in every year. Put aside, yes.
And... That's not even a street.
It'll be four pickleball courts. Yeah. So, I just want to get, at least, I, I reached out, and I reached everybody in doubt. The other choices we have, we discussed it about it as well, is there are temporary pickleball courts, if that's what the community wants to do and the board wants to do it. There are different, different ways. There are tiles they put together, they have the lines on them, and you can put on top a flat, blacktop, or whatever you want to do. That's between $11,000 and $12,000 for one court. And there's a roll-on one, they look like a big rug that's rolled out, and that's about, hmm, about 15,000, $16,000. And that's a roll-on that you put on, and you can roll it off if you want to use it. But again, it has to be a flat surface.
Right.
So, if you want to do pickleball, that's another option for a couple grand versus, so you get, and what's good about it, it's movable, so you can put it inside the pavilion, you can put it outside.
You can put it inside.
You can put anywhere you want. So, you know, if the board wants to be doing more research and new prices, or not do anything, whatever you guys want to do.
Well, the other one is, is pricey. Well, the other one is, is pricey. And then we don't know how well it'll be used, so it might be the, the temporary one might be the way to go until we see what the usage would be.
I mean, if your board wants to, at the next newsletter, we can put a word out there. If anybody's interested in pickleball, email us and I'll give you an update on how many people might be interested in the village. Because City of Pete's Hill has it, the town has it.
Oh, it's a big, yeah, it's a, it's a growing sport, but again, you know, roller hockey was popular once too and it's no longer, so.
Yeah.
Oh, it isn't?
But, yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah, I was kidding, yep.
But, you know, there is, something has to be done.
Well, the tennis court, you gotta take a trip down, when you have a few minutes looking at the tennis courts, the tennis courts are in really bad shape.
No.
We're going to have to, I think we're going to have to shut them down. There's roots are growing, there's tripping hazard. It's in pretty bad shape, so maybe, I don't know, maybe we just tear everything off and just...
The fence is in good...
Yeah, the fence is in good condition.
The lights are...
On two sides. Yeah, on two sides.
Two sides need to be replaced.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the lighting?
The lighting works, we replaced the lighting.
So you're only talking the surface.
Correct.
And, and, you know, with all our, you know, our developers coming in, maybe they want to help us out as well.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they can come up with some ideas and some...
Yeah, it's time to get creative.
And we got a big, a big, a nuclear plant they just shut down too, that's looking to help the village, right?
That's correct. So maybe we gotta look into our other resources to figure this out.
Yeah. So we gotta think about what you want to do with those tennis courts. I think, I have to look at them, there's, it's very uneven, the surface is cracking off.
Think it'll all have to be ripped up and...
I think, I, I think at this point, we're going to have to close the tennis courts for the next coming year and then decide what you want to do.
I don't think anybody's been using them for quite a while.
No.
I think because they are...
Yeah.
I think, no, Scott told me he saw a couple of kids last weekend playing on one of them.
Tennis?
Tennis.
Really?
Yeah.
So we do, you know, just so everyone knows, we do have a rec fund. I think there's about 200,000 dollars in that. Also, I know the rec committee should be meeting soon this month and they're looking to do, put out a survey too. So get some kind of idea from the residents what they're looking to do.
Sure.
Marcus, are you all set?
I, yes, I think I'm done with everything I want to report unless the board has any questions.
No, I don't think so.
No, great job.
Explain everything, good. Um, I'm going to leave.
Oh, sorry, one more thing, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I forgot, Mike Miners here. Mike has been working the tele, the telecast of our cable access channel. We were able to get cable vision up, oh, Altis, so that's up now. And he's working at Verizon.
So that's our, like for Verizon, the channel 29? Yeah, because I know a lot of people have been asking.
Thirty.
Thirty, I'm sorry, whoops. Oh, that's right, News 12 is channel 29. Because I know some people like to look at it, our meetings and things on our events on TV.
Yes, people don't have, if you want to look at YouTube, they won't look at TV. But hopefully, when the next, when the next week or two, we should have the other channel up and running too. We had to pay a couple pieces of equipment, was I ordered already.
All right. And then we had gotten the, the controller from East Fischke, which, which helped us to be able to get that up online again.
Right. Sorry to interrupt, sorry.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
Thanks, Mike.
So I'm going to leave to the board. We had our Christmas tree lighting on Sunday evening. It was a little wet, but, you know, I'm sure everyone will have a, a comment about our, our Christmas tree lighting. I just have a few announcements. On Thursday, the Town of Cortland, it's their turn to sponsor the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. It's at Thursday, December 7th at 3:30 at the Cortland Town Hall. And it's 82 years ago and a day that will live in infamy and we will never forget. So anyone interested in going to that? Also, the veterans ceremony was, the town also, it was their turn and it was a beautiful ceremony that they had. They had some of the kids reading different things, thanking the veterans. So it was, and then we had the choir, the, the high school choir sang and they did a beautiful job. The treble, it's treble makers, not tre, troublemakers, treble makers. So I just want everyone to know, the December meeting was changed from the 26th to the 19th, so our next meeting will be on December 19th. And I also believe AMS will be in on the 19th for the site plan.
I don't think so.
No?
I think they're waiting for the planning board to finish their comments. So that way they'll have something to discuss with the village board.
Okay, that's fine. The St., the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the board is willing to take that on this year?
Yes, and I spoke with Beth and her and I will be meeting this week to hand over the duties and then I can put together a meeting with any residents or board members that are interested in, in helping out.
Okay, so I, I think most of the board was interested. So I don't know if, if the, because we got to step on this.
Yeah.
This is a couple, this is a couple of months.
Yeah, I spoke today.
Yeah, okay, good. Because I, I had asked her also to please forward the information to the whole board. So I don't know if the board wants to have a special meeting the next couple of months or do you want to have a meeting before our regular meeting, like at 6 o'clock? But, you know, maybe Steve, everybody needs to take a piece, like somebody takes the band piece and...
Yeah.
Because since we're, we're, we're tight on time now. So, but, you know, I, I know you offered to, to run with this, so we'll figure out what meetings we have to have and what needs to be done, so.
Yeah, I think having a special meeting ahead of some of our, our meetings going forward would be helpful.
Do you want to put a committee together with some residents as well?
Oh, yeah.
No, absolutely.
Yeah. But for all of us to meet together, we'll hold a special meeting with the residents.
And I think she had, the, the committee chairwoman was asking for someone to take over and we haven't had anybody come forward yet. So, once again, anyone interested, please contact the board and we will let you know when the meeting is and that would be greatly appreciated. The annual house decorating, we have that every year and we give $50 gift certificates. And I know originally I had asked the board to be judges, but now we have a recreation supervisor. So would the board still like to be the judges? The, the judging is on December 13th and the winner is notified on December 15th. Or should we let the recreation supervisor do that?
Let her do it.
Okay.
She seems very happy. She said the other night she was happy that she was the part of doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, good. That takes care of that. I'm sorry, I had, I have a few things going on here. We spoke about the cell phone service. We are also, the village is also working on an IMA for door, door control with the town. We did have something years ago and, but we have to pick that back up and Stephanie, I think...
Michael's going to get me a copy. He's looking as well for the old one. I don't have a copy.
Okay. Yeah, because we, we used to have that. I don't know what happened, but we do need to have...
I think it was, they just did it as the town, which is normally their responsibility. Excuse me.
Under village and town law, if the village doesn't want to do it, we can give it up to the town. So the town used to do it and then all of a sudden, after the administration change, they said, well, we need an IMA agreement. I don't think, if the village, like if the village gave it the assessing function, you don't do an IMA agreement, the town accepts the responsibility. So I don't know what's going on, but I've done this multiple, I've been in town and villages in the past. The town is responsible to provide services to the community if the village doesn't want to do it. So now they want an IMA, so I don't, I...
Actually, they're telling me they had an IMA.
Never have.
I've never seen it in all my years here, so.
Never have.
I asked them to find it and said to me.
Who just had an agreement that they would cover that, okay.
No, they're required, they're required the law, we just passed it.
Well, I had spoken to the supervisor and then he forwarded to the legal department to, to do an IMA.
If you don't approve on the IMA, they're not required to do, but whatever it is, it is.
Well, I guess that's what they're looking for, so. As long as we have the door control coverage, that's, that's the important bottom line to this whole thing.
If they want something signed, we sign.
Yeah, that's all. Also, tomorrow evening, Wednesday, December 6th is the, at the town hall, is the next decommissioning oversight board meeting. So that should be quite an interesting meeting because this is the first time since Hall Tech has told everyone that the decommissioning is going to go on hold for eight years, which is not a good thing. Also, what else? And then I understand there's a meeting Thursday night for the project in Verplank. I understand Ginsburg is, is looking to introduce a project to the town where the quarry is. I believe there's a meeting Thursday night on that.
Yeah, I heard from some people who are connected, they talk about 200 units, a spa inn, like the one in the abbey, if anybody to the abbey in Pete's Hill or something similar to that. 51 room inn, spa, in a place you have a wedding or a bar mitzvah or whatever you want to do. So it's going to be a little hall, whatever you want to call it. 220 units and then it's going to be a public swimming pool for the public and then a private pool for the 200 residents, minimum 200 of your residents. So suppose they provided that and one meeting in the morning and they're going to have another meeting, so.
Is this a meeting at town hall or?
Yeah, is it there?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to get some information. I think it's at town hall, they're going to do...
Where was this even announced? I didn't hear it.
I heard from the quarry, yeah, I heard from the quarry, somebody from the quarry committing said, said that they would be doing that. So as soon as I get more information, I'll, I'll let the board know.
And this will be open to the public or it's just...
Yeah. Yeah, I, my understanding it was open to the public. I just didn't know if anybody else...
There's been no official notice given to me from the town or, somebody from Verplank just called it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, that should be an interesting meeting. Sorry. I also, my first time attending the Yorktown Light Parade on Saturday night.
Were you with us too?
Yeah, oh, I didn't see you. There was about 2,000 people there. It was, it was nuts.
Yeah, it was insane.
And it was so cute, looking at the, there were so many little kids there and their faces just, it was unbelievable. So of course I started thinking, so maybe next year, the village could do something on a smaller scale, because there were over 60 vehicles there. It wa, it was unbelievable. It was, it was just beautiful. So something to think about in the future. Also, because of everything that's happened with this legislation being passed, Save the Hudson, the effect that's happening to the village with this stop on the decommissioning, I know the board wanted a letter to go out and I think now is a really good time considering we can show that we have a loss with what's happening. So the letter will be going out, but I'm going to pass it to the board first. I'm just waiting for it to be typed up so that I can get approval. But what I'd really like to do, and I'd like the board there, and we will schedule a time, I would like to do a press release with everyone when we send that letter out. So I will let you know, we'll work out a time that works for all of us. And one other thing I'd like to say is, I'm trying to find my paperwork here. So, hold on. Also, Congressman Lawler's office did contact me. He has a ceremony and on December 19th at 3:00 PM, it's for a veteran of the year ceremony, honoring veterans from across the 17th Congressional District for their incredible contributions to our community. And we have one resident who stands out that should be recognized and should get this award. And that's, is he here? Bob Ferguson. So we have not, I have nominated Bob Ferguson as the veteran of the year for this year for Senate, for Congressman Lawler, Congressional 17. Thank you, Bob. You do, you know what? Bob is retired military. Bob, his, his bio is just unbelievable, but he, he works with the veterans, helps the veterans. Do you want to come up and say a few words? I mean, he's, he's so involved with the veterans, still helping veterans and everything and I just thought he was the person that definitely deserved to get this award.
And Bob's wife was my Cub Scout leader.
Was she? Dorothy? Yeah?
We go way...
Oh, my goodness. Oh, wow.
Yes. I'm Bob Ferguson. I lived on Fort Street, 197 Fort Street. I am a recent resident of Buchanan, only five years, but I was a resident of the Town of Cortland since 1966. So in addition to, I am the co-chairman or vice chairman of the Town of Cortland Veterans. So at the December, the Veterans Day, excuse me, on Veterans Day, there was quite a bit of talk about the food bank. And I just want to say, Teresa herself personally stepped forward and asked, said, this is a disgrace that veterans are going to be, you know, without food. It was a lot of falsehoods were being stated, actually. So she assigned me a task of trying to get to the bottom of it and if there were any veterans in need in Buchanan, to try and get ahold of them. So I worked a little bit on it, but it developed. I spoke to Sean Murray, the food bank never closed. And it didn't seem we have any destitute veterans, but it's nice to know. She said her funds were paying it, so I want to congratulate and mention to her, because she was very, very, very upset, she was almost crying when she heard the stories. So, and I really, I thank the honor of being accepted as a veteran of the year. Thank you.
It's well deserved, Bob. Well deserved. So any of the board members that would like to attend that, I, you know, I have the information where it is. It's up in Putnam County, December 19th at 3:00 PM.
Is there a manager at the Putnam?
It's the Putnam County Bureau of Emergency Services, 112 Old Route 6 in the Carmel So, yes, yeah, that's, that's one thing that upsets me more than anything, is to see how this country doesn't take care of our veterans. We owe them everything, our veterans, so that's unacceptable, but the, the food bank is open and up and running and that's good news. Okay, we're going to start on this side of the room. Bob, what do you have for us tonight?
I don't have too much. I did attend the annual tree lighting Sunday at the Village Circle. The weather held out, you know, it was a great crowd. It was Jackie's first event that she held for us. I think she did a great job. Little hiccup here and there, but it came out very good. The troublemakers were there from Henry Hudson High School, they did a great job. Like to thank the fire department. They're there as they are every year. The police department with their security around the perimeter to keep the cars away from the kids and all the adults watching the events. The highway department for all their hard work and all the board was there. I had a great time. You know, I've been doing that on the other side of the table for a long time and the tree looked great, everything looked great at the circle, so. And on top of that, I'd just like to say happy holidays, everybody, and be safe. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Bob. Anthony, what do you have for us?
Um, let's see here. So I want to touch base on what Bob just said. The tree lighting was, was fantastic. Jackie had her first try at it, knocked it out of the park. I thought she did a great job. Like thanking everybody that was involved. Mayor, mayor did her part and, and the highway department, the police department, the fire department, Santa Claus, everybody did their part and the kids were happy. That's what made me happy. I like to see all the families out there from the village. It was a good event. The other thing is, is like, I want to touch on the bonds that we just, we just passed with the, you know, just a little bit. Teresa said we had some bad news tonight, absolutely, we had some bad news. And we were trying to reinvent the village, but we are still reinventing the village. We are not going to stop. And we are going to move forward no matter what happens with that plant. We have to, we don't have a choice. So, you know, it's like when we issued these bonds, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but regardless of that, these things have to be done. They have to be done anyway. And whether it's now or the future, we're still going to be in the same situation as we are now. So we're going to be battling the outcome of that plant. And it's, it's, it sucks. Sucks that we have to be in this position, but we have to be, so we have to look forward into the future. And I, I think we can stabilize this village enough to, to, to make it through. And regardless of what happens up there, I'm, I'm not, you know, I feel like they have dictated to us for so long on how they're going to control that plant, that they're going to continue doing it no matter what we say. So we have to just try and navigate through it by ourselves. And I think this board here is willing to take on that responsibility. So I know that seemed like a lot of money before and it is going into this, but we're going to get through this, no problem. I, I have no question. I, I, I know we're getting to holiday season as well. I'm excited about the, the Jackie going around doing the Christmas lights. I think that's wonderful. I just want everybody to be safe, you know, you know, getting out there in the streets, be safe. Remember, there's to be, maybe some Christmas carols out there for, we can all hope that that still exists. And just be safe, and keep your eyes out, and take care of each other. You know, we should all be thankful that we are here, we have a safe place to live, and we have these holidays to celebrate, because a lot of people don't. So with that, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Dan, what do you have for us this evening?
Yeah, no, just to hit on the Christmas tree lighting again, is, you know, this is my second year of being involved as a, as a board member, and it was well-attended. And to hit on everything that everybody else hit on with the tree lighting, I'd also like to extend out the, the thank you to the local businesses that contributed, some gift certificates, et cetera. They're, you know, our small businesses are an integral part of our village, and it's nice to see them, you know, step up and donate some gift certificates, et cetera. To hit on the St. Patrick's Day Committee again, Steve and I are gonna try and form something to, to, you know, keep this parade moving forward. It's always been a part of the village for the last 20, 20 years or so, and we want to see it continue, and we want to, we want people to get involved. So anybody that's willing to step up and help us, we're looking for volunteers, so please speak to Steve or I, and we'll figure it out.
Is that an Italian thing? You're not mentioning me?
Uh-oh, uh-oh, this is going downhill.
And, and Bob, and Teresa. To hit on the Buchanan's engine, Buchanan Engine Christmas Party for the children, again, it's the 17th, from 2 to 4, and I just think it would be, I think we should utilize the Code Red again, just to put it out there. You know, we have access to that, and we should just, you know, one more tool to be able to communicate effectively, so, and get the message out, so. And I just wish everybody a happy holiday season.
Thank you, Dan. Steve, what do you have for us?
Thank you. I just echo, you know, the other board members' comments regarding the tree lighting. It was a great event, and I, you know, thank everyone that was involved in putting that together. I do encourage all residents to sign up for the Code Red. I would like to see us kind of push that forward on our social media and our website, because it's a very important tool to get the information out to the residents. And with that, you know, one of the, the important things that are coming up, there is the planning board meeting coming up on December 20th. There are three very important applications that are before the planning board. One will come back to us shortly, and as Anthony said, you know, we are looking to move forward and move, you know, just, just move things forward in the village, and these applications are very much needed in, in the plan to, to revitalize and, and continue to support the village going forward, so. I'd like to see everybody participate in that, and wish everybody a happy holiday season.
Thank you. I, I would like to comment on one thing. I am very disappointed, because we were on a road of, of trying to get that property released for many years. And we are reinventing ourself as we're going along, but we're not giving up. There's, there's other options. I'm working on something else, and I'll bring it to the board meeting. I have a meeting with Congressman Lawler's legislative people soon, so there's, there's options, still looking for money, so, yes, we're gonna be reinventing ourselves, we're not quitting. You know, we all, everyone on this board wants the village to survive, so we just have to look at the different options, different opportunities, move forward, and, and stay alive here, because this is a great community. This is very, there are not many communities like this. This is still small town USA.